All right. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll so that we can establish a court?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Loloi?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Vice Merchantier?
Here.
Councilmember Gata?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Vang?
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg?
I am here. Good afternoon to everyone. Let us begin here with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask Councilmember Rick Jennings if you would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings, and a very good afternoon to everyone. City Council, members of the staff, especially the members of the public who are tuning in. Tonight, we have two very important discussion items, but first, we have a consent calendar. As I understand it, Madam Clerk, there are some members who have requested either separate votes and/or items to be pulled and continued. If you could please review that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item seven, we just need to adjust the location to be District Three and Four. On item eleven, we're going to pull that, and it will not be voted on this evening. And item twelve, Councilmember Harris would like to pull that for a separate discussion and vote.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion? I'm sorry.
I do have two members.
Sorry, I have it.
Councilmember Valenzuela, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. I would like to also note on item six that it should be listed as District Five and not District Four, and I'd like to pull item seven for additional discussion. A separate vote, please.
Okay, so let me then take a motion on the consent calendar for items one through six, eight through ten, fifteen, excuse me, thirteen through sixteen. Is there a motion? With the one amendment for item six, as Councilmember Valenzuela noted in terms of the district, which it did.
I do have two callers, Mr. Mayor. Would you like to take those before the vote?
Was there a motion in the second already?
No.
I'll move.
Let's do that first.
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved in second, and let's hear from the two callers, and then we will vote, and then we'll get to the other items separately.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Robert Copeland. I live in District Four. I'm going to speak on eleven and twelve. Any surplus land should be used for tiny home locations, and if you do sell the properties, they should go to low-income housing developers for low-income housing, and that money should be for use for warming centers and shelters. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello there, Mayor and councilmembers. This is Heather Fargo, calling you from District, what am I in these days? Oh, District Three. And I'm calling you on item number twelve, which is the declaration of surplus property for a parcel on Fong Ranch Road in South Natomas. It is north of the Natomas High School and south of Interstate eighty, just to the east of Truxell. And I'm calling, this is a site that we had worked on for a number of years, both Ray Tretheway and myself and the community. It was called the Field of Dreams, and we were hoping to turn it into a baseball complex for Natomas youth baseball. We were able to get a million dollars donation from Opus and were able to get the property, but we were not able to get the facility, not the facility, the Natomas Basin Conservancy Fund paid for, and ultimately, we're not able to develop the project. So we're sad to see it go, but one of the reasons it was approved in that site at the time is that there's only one small park at this point in that part of South Natomas between Truxell and the canal and between Interstate eighty down to San Juan, and that is the Check Wagon Park. Part of the Check Wagon Park has been sold now by the Twin Rivers School District, so this was going to help make up for acreage that did not exist in that area. So I'm hoping, and I think Jeff Harris is going to bring this up, that the proceeds from the sale, or at least a portion of it, can go to make up for that shortage of park acreage, either by buying the rest of Check Wagon Park, by extending the Niño's Parkway from eighty, from San Juan up to eighty, or developing the North Gate Patio Site that we call the Garden Valley Park. So that is my recommendation, and the only other recommendation that I have is, it doesn't seem fair that you only get two minutes for an entire consent calendar. But with that, I'm sure I'm out of time. Have a good meeting and talk to you later.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Always a pleasure to hear from former mayor, and I hope that whoever on the council ten years from now will say the same thing about me. So I'm glad that you called. These, the two callers called on the items. We're going to take separate from this particular, but that's okay. Let us take a vote on the consent calendar in the way I described earlier, one through six, eight through ten, and thirteen through sixteen. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion by Councilmember Valenzuela, a second by Councilmember Vang. The entire consent calendar with the exception of item seven, eleven, and twelve. Mayor Pro Tim Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Loloi?
Hi.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Merchantier?
Hi.
Councilmember Gata?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Hi.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, the consent calendar is described, and the motion passes. Now let's take each of the items that were requested to be heard separately, separately, and I guess we should go in chronological order. Let's start with number seven, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes, thank you. And I've gotten some great feedback from the community, including former Mayor Fargo, who's excited to see this move forward. I did want to move it with a slight amendment to clarify, and Public Works always does a great job of checking back with us before they finalize plans, but I did get a specific request to make sure that the community and our offices, myself and Councilmember Harris, who I think this may or may not be in your district, Jeff, I'm not sure where the line is on this, but if, that we could review the final plans before the planning director approves them for this specific project. So with that, I'd like to move with that amendment, if that's all right with the.
Okay. Councilman Harris, you share the, you share the territory.
That is fine with me.
Okay, that is, that'll be a second?
That is a second.
Okay, if there's no testimony, let's call the roll, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Loloi?
Hi.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Merchantier?
Hi.
Councilmember Gata?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Okay, item seven passed. Let's move to item eleven. I think this was Councilmember Valenzuela again, or no?
That, that one got pulled, Mayor.
That one got pulled. I apologize. That one is pulled. So now it's good at twelve, and that is Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. So this piece of property, as Heather Fargo spoke to in her phone call, was purpose for a ball field a significant amount of time ago. It's laid vacant for a while, and as we all know, Park Bridge has been developed right next door. That developer, Clifton Taylor, looked at purchasing this property in question for affordable housing, but the deal couldn't be consummated. That, however, was before we populated our Housing Trust Fund with a significant amount of money. So I'd like to have Rich Sanders come on the meeting here and answer a couple of questions about surplusing this land and what new state legislation means in terms of dedicating it to affordability. Rich?
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. My name is Richard Sanders, the Facilities and Real Property Superintendent with the Department of Public Works. This property, as Councilmember Harris mentioned, has been for sale for a number of years, and recent legislation related to the Surplus Land Act requires the cities to now go through a formal declaration prior to selling any property as surplus property. This is an administrative action at this time, so we can continue through the process and the steps that the Surplus Land Act requires. Subsequent steps would be sending out notice of availability to other government agencies as well as affordable housing developers, and the Surplus Land Act also requires that any property that is sold and developed for housing must be developed with affordable housing components, and that is our intention in this case.
So, Rich, a question here. Obviously, money will be generated from the sale. As I understand it, there are some bond funds that were used to buy it that must be repaid, and something else as well. Is that correct?
That's correct. The original acquisition, the funds came from two thousand and two bonds, as well as the Department of Utilities Storm Drainage Contingency Fund. We will be required by Prop 218 to reimburse the DOU fund, and if there are any outstanding bonds, we may have to apply it towards that. Any excess sale proceeds would be earmarked towards the Innovation and Growth Fund, as required by prior city council resolution.
So as, as, as far as that goes, this property was originally intentioned to be an amenity for the South Natomas community, and as such, I would like that remainder, instead of going into the IGF to stay in South Natomas where it was intended to be spent. There may be some credence to former Mayor Fargo's discussion about needing more parkland, although I'm not certain that that's the case since we developed Oak Brook Park. But if that's a requirement, we need to know it, and certainly, the money could be used for that, but what would be the pathway to use the money for the, the area where it was intentioned?
Well, currently, we do not have any purchase and sale agreement, so we don't know what those amounts will be. And as I mentioned, the existing city council resolution requires it to go into the Innovation and Growth Fund, which is a citywide fund. If there is a desire to earmark those funds for a more specific area, we would have to investigate what steps would be needed as we get closer to that, to that time.
So this is my direction, then, that as we approach a purchase and sale agreement, that the city manager comes back with a potential vote, you know, to see if the council will allow this money to stay in South Natomas. So with that direction, I would move the item, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, if I could speak to that and second his item, would that be okay?
Yes, of course.
So I'll second Councilmember Harris's motion, but I would just would like to enter a couple of things into the record. I, this deal was done before me. As Mayor Fargo stated, this was an Opus project. The Opus buildings are the buildings on the north side of the freeway. They purchased this piece of land on the south side of the freeway, and they were working with Natomas Youth Pony to build these fields. That didn't happen. However, what I want you all to know is that we did spend a million dollars to improve the fields that Natomas Youth Pony used through the, and continue to use, which are at Rio Tierra. We did it in conjunction with Twin Rivers Unified so that we could also fix up the schools at the same time. So that million dollars went to fix all the drainage and all of the pipes underneath the existing fields there at Rio Tierra and Smythe. And then the city also built, or we built, a large baseball complex in the North Natomas Regional Park that's used by all the families in Natomas who play Little League. So we have, I think, kept our word and our promise on improving baseball diamonds, both in South Natomas and creating new ones in North Natomas that serve all of Natomas. So I think Councilmember Harris's motion is very appropriate, that we seek out some form of housing or affordable housing partner, but I do believe that the proceeds of the sale beyond whatever needs to be paid back to DOU or pay for bonds should stay in South Natomas. That was its intention, and there are certainly plenty of things that it could be used for down there, community center improvements, or the Garden Arts Center, or North Gate, all things that Councilmember Harris has championed, or parks, additional parks land would all be good uses and would, would meet the promise made to that community back when Opus made the deal with then-Major Fargo and Councilmember Tretheway. So with that, I second the motion.
Thank you, Angelique. That was very helpful information.
Thank you very much. Now I have Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the discussion, and thank you, Councilmember Harris, for pulling us from consent so we can talk about it. I've been a student of the Surplus Lands Act for a while and by far not the expert on the policy, but I can say that the intent of state law, at least as I understand it, was always to try to make the best public use of properties that were in public ownership, so that it wasn't always about market rate sales. In fact, I think subsequent legislation clarified that you could sell it for as low as a dollar. It was okay to sell it for below market rate if you were trying to make a community need be met through the part, like the exchange of that property. And so one conversation I do want, because a really wise person once told me, his name's Scott Syfax, once told me when we were starting the Community Land Trust, that you can't build more land, that land is the one thing that, you know, once you're, once it's gone, it's gone. And I think right now, since we're in the middle of this master siding plan conversation, that kind of warrants just the question and discussion about whether selling this property is in the best interest, or if we could maybe explore, and I mentioned this to Councilmember Harris on the phone, like, we could do land swaps, you know, we can maybe break off pieces of it and think about, hey, there's a three-acre parcel somewhere else that we could swap that for, that's real, really well-suited for tiny homes, or, you know, whatever use we might have. So I guess I just want to, I'm hesitant to sell the parcel, because it is so big. I have a hard time visualizing size and space, but I looked up how big an acre is, and an acre is the size of a football field, give or take, right? And so twenty-five football fields worth of space. It just, I wonder if selling it is in the best use of that public asset, or if we should have a conversation about holding on to it a little bit and thinking about what those creative options might be for meeting the needs of the community as a whole.
Mayor, one final comment. You know, we have to surplus this land, move forward with it, you know, to go through the hoops to make it available for uses. Obviously, we have a great need for affordable housing, and with our Housing Trust Fund, this could be a really good match. And like I said, we did have a proposal to do an affordable housing build out there in the past. I think this opens the door for a tremendous need in our city to affect affordable housing. So that being said, you have my motion and a second.
Well, just to be clear from my perspective, and sorry to keep interjecting, but so like the next step from this isn't like that it's just going to be sold and we see an agreement, like there's, there's room for us to talk about what the appropriate purchases, what the appropriate exchange would be. Okay, and that's, I think, part of the discussion that maybe through the siding plan, I think the site in particular is of interest to think about.
Councilmember Valenzuela, and also in Councilmember Harris's motion, was specific to look at housing as we, whatever moves forward with it. I think that's his intent. I think that's your intent, too. Having spoken with both of you, I think you're on the same page.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it was super clear.
It's clear.
Okay. I heard the word housing. I heard. Okay. Let's call, let's call the roll on the motion, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Loloi?
Hi.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Merchantier?
Hi.
Councilmember Gata?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Hi.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, very good. That passes. Thank you. Good discussion on the consent calendar, everyone. We have two discussion items, two very important discussion items. Let us begin with item seventeen, which is our emergency response, I'm, my words, to the crisis of homelessness. How, I don't know if the city, I see Danielle Foster, of course, on, on the Zoom, our housing manager. I don't know if the city manager wanted to start this off in terms of a little bit of context, or whether we're turning it right over to Ms. Foster.
I think we turn over to Danielle first to go through the item, and then I can give the, the council an update on where we are with some of the prior council direction following the presentation. I think that would be best.
That's very good. Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, council. I am going to start a presentation here. Just to go over our non-congregate shelter, as you all recall, we started some of our non-congregate shelter work back in December, and we've continued it into January, but just wanted to sort of go over our objectives and talk through where we're at and, and where we're headed. So we started off looking at how do we increase isolation capacity in complement with the other efforts that were happening with the county's work, and that was through our partnership with the county at Cal Expo, and then looking at the most at-risk populations that, that we could shelter to slow the spread of COVID, but then that was further expanded based on the need for weather respite and looking at how we can assist unsheltered populations during extreme weather conditions. As I said, we started that in December, December eighteenth, we kicked off our motel voucher program and transitioned some of our Cal Expo trailers to shelter units for women and children. That was further expanded in late January with council's direction, January twenty-seventh, to further our motel voucher program and provide warming centers. We then have created additional coordination for both the shelter and service referrals for our families, and we're in partnership with the school district and other nonprofits that focus on our families and women and children, in addition to our coordination and outreach with Hope Cooperative and other local outreach folks. And then overall, and as part of this next step, we want to look at how do we continue to reduce the number of unhoused chronically homeless individuals through the motel voucher program who are holding housing choice vouchers and need assistance in leasing up those vouchers. So to date, our motel voucher program, it was originally seeded with two hundred and fifty thousand of our COVID relief funds, and we've been able to secure three hundred and fifty-three rooms. We have additional sites that are in process, and we continue to try to add as many rooms as we can. And to date, we've assisted five hundred and ten nonduplicative individuals with three thousand one hundred and eighty-three motel voucher nights, including sixty-four kids and seven pregnant women within that five hundred and ten individuals, and we continue to expand our services on all fronts, both with the number of motel nights and who can be served. And then, as I mentioned, we've definitely been working on expanding our community partnerships to see how we can pair the motel voucher program with other needs and other services in our community. You'll be hearing in a little bit from one of our partners in the school district on how we've been able to pair one of our motel sites with some of our unsheltered families and ensure that kids are accessing school from remote access. There's been a lot of drop-offs in attendance by some of our unsheltered students, so we've been able to reconnect some of those services through the motel voucher program, which is really exciting. With the Cal Expo trailers, we're kind of in a transition period. We have been sharing the trailer usage with our county staff partners to do the isolation units for COVID-positive, and then we were providing twenty-five units for the sheltering of women and children. Recently, the county, actually, on March first, the county is transitioning all of their isolation units to some of their room key motels, so we are able to further utilize the trailers for women and children. The great thing about this is there's onsite staffing, so ongoing support there and connections with resources and HMIS. And then currently, we, we have about thirty-six individuals there, but as I'm saying, we are definitely in transition, adding more and more every day to try and fill those additional units now that we have those online. As we've been doing more research on FEMA qualifications and opportunities for reimbursement there, while we have confirmed that non-congregate shelter is reimbursable through FEMA, and that includes the operations and the support around, not the support services, but, but getting people into those units, we do know that it's limited to households. Right now, it's still limited to households that are either COVID-positive or asymptomatic, sixty-five and older, have a pre-existing health condition, including pregnancy. So we definitely are still serving households and individuals that don't meet the FEMA reimbursement qualifications, and that's a piece of what we're bringing before you tonight as far as ongoing funding and support to ensure that we can continue to provide the program in its full capacity as we have been. Also noting that the FEMA reimbursement goes through September thirtieth, so part of our discussion with the council tonight is also to confirm ongoing use of the motel voucher program. As we're talking to motels and executing agreements, it's helpful to know kind of what our outlying end date is so far, and so we're, we're proposing that we attach that to the FEMA reimbursement date, which would go through the end of September. So related to the actions tonight and an overview of sort of what, what the recommendations are in the staff report, the first piece really relates to just authorizing staff to going after full reimbursement for all of our FEMA-eligible motel vouchers and trailer usage to ensure that we're maximizing our FEMA reimbursements there for all eligible households and going through September, allotting for the first five million dollars of reimbursements, and making adjustments as needed, similar to what we've done under the Great Plates Program to maximize FEMA reimbursement. The second piece is, as I think we've mentioned before, Sexits Forward is providing a three hundred thousand dollar grant fund towards the program, which we need to receive and budget into our process. This will include our full range of opportunities to serve different populations. We can spend it through, actually, next year, and it links us into HMIS, so we will start and, and actually backfill on entering all of the information from the individuals we're serving into HMIS, and that will help us connect them into our supportive services and other programs and making sure that all of the information we're collecting gets compiled into our overall database and information system that's connected through our continuum of care, so that we're working with all the partners in the continuum. The third piece relates to using some of our emergency services grant funds, solutions grant funds, and Sutter Health Funds to provide a hundred rooms for chronically homeless individuals. As you know, through this program, we haven't had the, the funds for the supportive services necessary to ensure our ability to successfully house chronically homeless individuals, so we wanted to do sort of a pilot that has a two-step combination of both providing those, the outreach and supportive services side, but then also really focusing on the rehousing and housing coordination piece to get them into housing and support them for the first year to ensure that they're successful in housing, and really wanting to link this up with our partners at SHRA and being successful in getting the, the hundreds of vouchers that we have issued to homeless individuals right now who are on the street that are trying to find housing but need that additional support in identifying, applying, and obtaining housing. So that would include some additional funds as well for application fees, deposits, things like that, to get people rehoused. And then the third, or the last piece, the fourth piece, is to provide the last bit of that first one million dollars allocated from the council in late January for our urgency response towards the, the motel voucher model so that we can continue to serve families that aren't FEMA reimbursable and ensure that we don't have any gaps of service there to go through and take the program towards that September date. So this is the overview, and then I also wanted to note that in addition to this six point two seven million dollars of funds in total with the FEMA reimbursements, we would look to coordinate this with the two million dollars that was set aside in the mid-year budget for housing funds for women and children to make sure that all of these resources are connecting together. So that's the overview of the program and where we're at. I did want to introduce Ashley Powers-Clark, who I believe is on the line on our Zoom here, and she's the Student Support Specialist from Oak Ridge Elementary School, and she's been a great partner with us in getting families into our. Families into our motel voucher program and connected to school and support services. So Ashley, are you on?
I'm here. Thanks for having me. All right. Did you want me to just speak briefly about the program?
If you could talk a little bit about our partnership and what it has been able to do to the benefit of the families that you serve.
Excellent. Well, thanks so much for having me. So I'm Ashley Powers Clark and the Student Support Center Coordinator at Oak Ridge Elementary School and I also do a lot of organizing. In Oak Park, specifically just providing mutual aids to families who are getting left behind during COVID-19. So I think there's really three important things to understand about the motel voucher program and and really what. The program has meant for some of our highly mobile and unhoused. Students and families. So I first just want to say a little bit about, you know, what has school looked like from the perspective of a homeless student and family? I want to tell you about the opportunity that the motel voucher program has given us. And then I just want to emphasize the importance of us continuing to collaborate. So as all some of this funding runs out, we don't. We don't really lose this opportunity that we've been able to have. So before the motel voucher program, our unhoused students were staying in encampments, cars that were severely damaged during the storm. Spending the nights on couches with family members or oftentimes just not knowing where they were going to lay their heads. One of our fathers endured a summer living in an encampment under a bridge with his sons when the temperatures were triple digits. And the air wasn't safe to breathe. So staying in the motels, we've got one student who never started middle school. He was dropped and deemed a no-show when the student couldn't get, when the when the school could not get ahold of his mom. Other students had missed upwards of 91% of the school year. We've got fourth graders reading at a first grade level, second graders who can't write their names. So the headlines called a lot of these students virtual dropouts, but the truth is, is that many of these students were never even given the opportunity to start. So for us, when the motel voucher program opened. It was honestly like a dream. It was like we were able to provide immediate shelter to some of our hardest to reach families. Danielle communicated directly with us about our needs and literally provided round-the-clock support. So that we were overnight able to get these families into safe and clean, stable motel rooms. So some of the things the family said on that first night was, Ms. Ashley, I don't believe this is real. Ms. Ashley, I feel like I can finally breathe. But when we think about it, if you've got four kids crammed on two motel room beds, it's not exactly a productive learning environment. Though it certainly beats staying in a car or a tent. So. Overnight, our community partners came together and we're able to recruit volunteers to build a community-based learning center for our families. Right now, we're providing three days of in-person literacy and social emotional support for all the students that are staying at the Greens Motel. One of our literacy specialists has done assessments for all of our kids and is providing one-on-one academic support. We've got weekly meal deliveries, basic need, basic needs items, and I think most importantly, it's the, it's given our families the opportunity. To just develop the sense of normalcy and routine that has not been a part of their life. You know, for years, to to say the very least. And I feel like. So together, you know, within the last couple of weeks, it's really just been us kind of. Boots to the ground, working with people in the community to make these services happen and collaborating closely with the city. And so when the when the vouchers end, because we know that there will be an end in sight. I don't think anybody in this meeting feels like it's acceptable to send these families back to their cars or encampments. So we're hopeful that we can continue to work with the city to build some short and long-term plans to just keep. Let's just keep these families in the motel while we can, while we work to build some a lot longer-term options. So that's, that was just the three points that I wanted to emphasize for everybody and. We couldn't be more grateful for this support that we've gotten from the city in the short term. And I think we've really demonstrated kind of what we can achieve when we work together with our community in the short term. So that's it.
Really great. Really great to hear that. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Danielle, do you want to wrap up here, then I'll just.
No, I was just going to wrap it up, so go ahead. Thanks, City Manager.
Mayor, so part of the the comment.
Howard, before you go, can I just make a really quick comment?
Sure.
Yes. And I, you know, I I just want to give kudos to Ashley and a lot of the teachers at Oak Ridge who have been doing. So much beyond teaching and really have made a difference in the lives of so many families there. You know, figuring out food, figuring out shelter. Beyond everything else that they're already doing there. So I just want to give a few kudos there and. Also to Danielle for reaching out. I think it's a great collaboration. This is not like district to district, but this is really person to person, making sure that we can help one person at a time and one family at a time. So I I just want to say thank you, Ashley. I know how hard you work and what you do over there. We've been watching this for for a while now, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Hey, I also want to hand out some kudos here. Thank you, Ashley, obviously, for working with our team, but. Bridget and Danielle have been and and the whole host of city staff behind the scenes that. You know, all the different players, Daniel Bowers and Morgan Lora and just all all the people that have. Just, you know, gone over above and beyond over the last couple of months to try and make all these things happen to benefit those in our community. I just wanted to add, Mayor, that. Part of this item, there's a question about some of the funding and what it was going to be going towards. Just very quickly, I wanted to recap. You know, the the mayor council declared a local severe weather emergency. And following that gave me the ability and and funding to, a million dollars in fact. To open warming centers that, you know, with some some of the severe weather that we were experiencing at the time. And we've contracted, we've gone through a bunch of different iterations. We've had these warming center staff, city staff, and we subsequently have. An operator on board who's managing all of the operations now. And we we really wanted to make sure that we had enough funding to get us through the end of March. And the part of that conversation too was coming up with a criteria for when we as a city, separate from the county. Will open these emergency warming centers, cooling centers, clean air centers for. The the event that we have, or the summer fire, the the fourth one. So it's it's my intent to bring an item back next week to provide a follow-up. And have our team talk about how the current severe weather guidance from the county and all the cities within the county. Was created and what the criteria was and basically how we got here. But in addition to that, our team is going to talk about what some of the other cities are doing and the criteria that they're using. And and it's very, it varies from agency to agency. We also looked at some of the agencies across the country. Really, the the goal is to get some feedback from this council about what our. City of Sacramento's severe weather guidance will look like and what will trigger an opening of a cooling center, a warming center, a clean air center. And so that that item is going to come next week. But in addition to that, following the council action, there's been discussion about potentially opening up. Some of these warming centers or we're calling them respite centers year-round. I'm looking to get some direction on. You know, both those items and not for tonight, but I wanted to preview it for. Mayor and council in anticipation of the report coming next week. And and I'm going to leave it there and take any questions if if there are any.
So City Manager, I know we got five callers and I see some of the members that want to speak. I just. We can use this evening, if the members wish to debate this fundamental question, but what Howard has indicated to us is that, and. I'm working with him, of course, is that we're teeing this very important. Broader conversation up for next week. And I don't want to be overly dramatic about it, but I would, I would say to you in preparation for next week, it might be the most important homeless discussion and debate that we have had. In many years and will have for some time to come, because the question before us. Will be whether or not we open. More shelter in the guise of. Of weather-related. Event centers. Or whether or not we make a broader commitment. To opening more overnight shelter regardless of. The temperature and the weather. And it is a, it is a vital debate for the future of our city and the future of this of this issue. And again. If members want to begin debating it tonight, that's okay, but the intent here is to have it next week. And if the council. Does choose to go forward with a broader approach. The money will follow. The money will follow. And so I know that there was some. Concern tonight from some members and some members of the community that, oh my God, we're taking money from the warming centers to fund. Motel voucher program. That was not the intent. I know. I'm not worried about the money. I'm more concerned, if you will, about. The council providing the clear direction. That the city manager is asking for about. The scope. Of this effort. I'm going to hold my opinion. You can probably guess what they are. But I think that's best for the next week and for. Tuesday and members, you'll have. Full opportunity to weigh in on this important question. So we've got five callers. Is it okay if we hear from the five callers first and then? We'll turn it over to the council members.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ethan Evans. I'm a professor of social work at California State University. And I just wanted to comment on the real potential reallocation of funds for different sheltering strategies and services. I feel like you were very right in taking actions to open and expand warming-style survival shelters this year. It's a type of inexpensive humanitarian relief that should be continued and expanded across the city. And there's something special about these centers and that's been the way it has enlisted community volunteers to help. It provides a real benefit to those who come inside while also building valuable solidarity. Something very different than other service provider-led interventions. And given the state of the economy and and kind of where our housing trajectory is going, we need to build that solidarity amongst residents. And that's why I was very surprised to hear that you may be thinking of relocating that money. To pay for wraparound services to a service provider from outside of the area. To assist 100 people. I think that the strategy of a low-cost, local. Solidarity effort in humanitarian relief could be the linchpin where you could collaborate with the county. Another goal that you've had in homeless relief efforts. They too could be enlisted to spread these survival warming shelters across the county with this. With what you've modeled, which is a low-cost intervention that brings in the community to help out. So I would encourage you to keep funding for those shelters going and expand it and look for opportunities to bring the county in. And more community volunteers in the humanitarian effort that's necessary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ethan. Again, this is, again. The money, don't worry about the money. That isn't the issue here. The issue is the council direction and policy on the continuation of. Overnight centers, whatever we call them. And that we are going to debate. And we're going to provide direction. Next week. All right, next caller, please.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Rob Kup. I live in District Four. If FEMA is going to pay for a lot of the people going to the hotels, I think Sacramento should go big on this. Get as many people indoors as you can. Especially women and children. I think Mayor Steinberg would agree with that.
Yes.
At least I hope he would.
Yes.
I know people that have gotten housing choice vouchers, but they never could find housing because there's not enough affordable housing. And will will these services include people getting their ID? Their cash benefit, social security, apply for social security? I don't think it's, I don't think it would be easy for children to study if they're in a tent or or in a car, so get them indoors first. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Q. I am a first-year medical student in the Sacramento area and I actually live in District Four. I also work with Sacramento Street Medicine and we're a group that works to meet the health and resource needs of the unhoused community. And so I'm calling in now to oppose at Agenda Item Number 17. While I think it's great that we're considering like additional funding for the motel voucher program, I think. We absolutely cannot divert funds away from warming centers. So like I said, I I work with Sac Street Med and my site actually covers Caesar Chavez Plaza and I know some of the. Some members of the council may know, but we had another unhoused community member die just three nights ago on Saturday night. And so that happened, multiple other unhoused community members have died in the past few weeks. Our group meets every other week to get, kind of give updates on for each other about what's going on at all our camps. And I can say that basically for all the meetings that we've had this year. Somebody had, we we report at least someone has passed away and that's not even counting the individuals who we know have, who died. On the night of the storm that was like late January. And so I think like at this time right now, it's. Kind of ridiculous to even think about diverting money away from warming centers because we all know we have another storm approaching. And so Mayor Steinberg, I I know you tweeted out that you're that you're not accepting the status quo. On homelessness and that this isn't an either-or situation. I know it's been reiterated here at this meeting. But I just think that the way this agenda item is written as it reads off to the community is that it is an either-or situation. And so I think to you, Mayor, and to the members of the council, if. If you think both these programs are important, the voucher, the motel vouchers and the warming centers, if you think they're both important, they're they're both deserving of funding. I think a clear statement, a clear stance on that with a real commitment to about additional funding.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah. I was just wrapping up and saying that, yeah, that statement you're talking about, that real commitment is going to be really impactful for the for the community. Thank you.
I just want, I I want to say, Madam Clerk, I don't usually respond to callers. I cannot be clear. And I will be more clear in the days ahead as we approach next Tuesday. Why I believe we need to dramatically expand the numbers of people we bring indoors.
Okay.
Period. End the story and put the money to it, but I want, I'm resisting debating tonight because I want to. I want to have the fuller discussion. Next Tuesday, but I I. Can't be clear. Go ahead. Next caller.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, Richard Wake, City Council, District Five. You know, I, you know, listening to the discussion on TV tonight, you know, the the. The nice woman from Sacramento City Unified School District mentioned that some of her students were staying outside in tents. In the extreme heat and during, there was a lot of, for a lot of the smoke during the fires. And, you know, I can speak to that firsthand because one of my best friends from my college days at Sac State, a buddy of mine, Jim. Was homeless for two years because he was illegally fired from his state job and he was outside in the smoke on many occasions because. The VOA shelter on North A Street kicked everybody out at six in the morning and there was no place for not only him but other people to go. So having said that. You know, a few weeks ago, Councilmember Harris mentioned Cal Expo. And he did mention to Mayor Steinberg that he would like to see. What can be done to maybe speak to the governor about opening up Cal Expo. You know, I don't know what all the options are or what all the best answers, you know, what, you know, every detail, obviously. I'm just a regular dude. Trying to help out here, but you know, we can kill two birds with one stone with Cal Expo. There's not only plenty of indoor space there, but there's plenty of space for parking and it's. and especially for vehicles with trailers and motorhomes. As Councilmember Chenier knows, we have a problem with, it's all over Sacramento, but over on Riverside Boulevard, there are a couple of motorhomes and trailers that need spaces. And I'm hoping sometime they could be moved over to the school over, or the church over in Lemon Hill. That will remain to be seen. But I'd like to hear more from Councilmember Harris or somebody about the options of opening up CalExpo. For one, the cost wouldn't be all that much, most likely. You know, and, you know, thinking that, you know, there is a large homeless problem with Governor Newsom's impending recall that's probably gonna happen, one would think that he would want to do something about the homeless issue and open up CalExpo to make, you know, to at least, uh, you know, try and get something done, so.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete, will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, CalExpo is there, I'd like to hear more about what can happen with CalExpo, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, thank you very, very much, let's turn it over now to the council. Can you help me with the order of Madam Clerk in terms of who posted up first?
Thank you, Councilmember Harris, Gera, and then Valenzuela.
Go ahead, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, like yourself, I'm gonna resist the temptation to debate. I think that, uh, while we share a common goal, we may see a different way to get there. But in this situation, it's, it's unique that I agree with everything that Robert Copeland said and Richard Wake. Now, that's kind of verse-shaking for me, but, uh, you know, CalExpo remains a tremendously rich opportunity site that would open the door to many of the programs that we're trying to affect. And I think that we should collaborate and push hard for this, because it, we can solve all of the siting issues, done, in, out, and done, right there. Uh, this is a really important piece. I would like to thank Danielle and Bridget for the work they've done, and Ashley, thank you for your report as well. You know, what they're talking about is the efficacy of non-congregate shelters and getting people into motels, the stability that that creates is much more far-reaching than one-night respite in warming centers, although they have their place. You know, we, we, we have to address many aspects of homelessness. But what it really drives home to me, as we dive deeper into the discussion about our reaction to homelessness and the programs that we want to fund is this, we have to make a stand on which populations we want to focus on. And I share a, a real passion, I think along with Councilmember Ashby, to try to get to functional zero for women and children and families on the street, because the repercussions of children growing up on the street are just extremely dire. And I think that we can do that if we, if we have a focus, but these are all things that we need to debate. And I agree with you, Mayor, we need to have policy, we need to give clear direction to the city manager about criteria under which we want him to act. There's, there's, I don't think we disagree on that point. But what we have right now is a program that is working very well. It's worth funding, it's helping a tremendous amount of people. And when it comes right down to it, the fact is true, there are numerous people that we have already been helping that have housing choice vouchers and no place to express them. So once again, housing looms as the most pressing problem that we have. That's why I'm focused on the surplus property in South Natomas to get as much affordable housing going as we possibly can, because, look, you know, we can help people overnight, we can help people for a couple of weeks in a motel, but if we can't get them into housing, we just turn them back to the street, either the next morning, or the next week, or the next month. So, uh, you know, multifaceted problem. Again, I think we have a common goal, and it will be a very interesting debate next week, I look forward to it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. Okay, um, next was Councilmember Gera, then Councilmember Valenzuela, then Councilmember Laloie.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I wanna, I wanna also resist getting into a long debate here, too. We'll, we'll save it for next week. But I wanted to thank, uh, uh, you know, Ashley and Danielle, and also our library, uh, team, because, uh, and Leslie Fritchie, I wanted to thank Leslie Fritchie. Uh, we've been able to use the Colonial Heights Library down the street on Stockton Boulevard for tutoring afterwards for some of the, the students there, the kids, and being able to provide a warm outdoor, uh, space during, uh, during that time as well. So we were able to get some heaters out there for them. They're trying to make it the best environment possible, uh, given the situation. But again, I think, uh, to this point, why I, one of the reasons I, I pushed for, um, not just one million, but two million into the support for, um, you know, women and children is because there is that great need. And I know that, uh, we do have, uh, St. John's and, and City of Refuge that are doing great work, but we have other providers throughout the city, um, that are, uh, that are also moving on this, including our success, I wanna again thank Danielle on this, our success with the Weave and, uh, um, on the manufactured housing. Uh, and I just saw some great photos about the manufactured housing site for St. John's, and we are looking at actual homes and using efficiency housing as a great way to have an actual, uh, way for that. Uh, but, uh, so to that point, uh, one of the things that have come out of our District Six Working Group is that, a common theme is that the, the folks experiencing homelessness, including families, are coming at this from, from different points and are, are affected differently. And so that, that's why I think, uh, I'd ask the city manager when coming back, that we, that'd be part of the, the, the point of view, and why we need a diversity of options, um, uh, because we don't have a monolithic group, and, and, um, and we have to understand that if we're gonna be affected, we gotta take that into, uh, an understanding. So I'll leave it at that there, and, uh, you know, appreciate all the great work on that, and really, a, a community, a community around Stockton Boulevard pulling together to help some, some families. So thank you, uh, for all those in that effort.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Gera. Uh, Councilmember Valenzuela, then Laloie, then Mayor Purtimashby.
Thanks, uh, and all the staff for your presentation, for the members of the public who called in. As was noted on one of the calls, I did have a constituent die this weekend, another constituent, um, sixty-three years old, his name was John Lane. Um, you know, he essentially died for being poor. And so I know folks don't wanna have a fuller conversation tonight, but I am not that disciplined, and I am gonna bring up some questions and some thoughts tonight, because frankly, I mean, every single life in this city is precious and important, and everything we can do to save as many people as we can, regardless of whose job it is or what, why, how they ended up there, or what it's gonna take to get them into stability, I think has got to be our goal. Um, I mean, frankly, we could fit a tiny home for every single person in this city, I've done the math, cuz I'm a nerd like that, um, on the square acreage of twenty-five-acre lot, we could fit thirteen thousand tiny homes on that lot, assuming we did that well. And, and so I think we have the opportunity to do it. I think it's really a matter of making this master plan real and really identifying the sites, cuz this isn't a matter, hopefully, of sheltering people forever, this is a matter of sheltering them until we start moving in place the permanent solutions, whether it's buying hotels, whether it's making housing available, whether it's moving people into supportive housing, whatever that looks like. You know, for me, I look at this in terms of, like, I call it in our task force, short-term, long-term, right? Like, how do we just get people into a place where they're less likely to just die for lack of medical attention or for the elements or whatever? I think we're tricking ourselves, cuz these days are so warm and so nice, but it is still getting into the thirties at night, and that is still a not-safe space for a lot of people to be in. And that's not even counting the women who are getting assaulted, or the children, or as been noted, or the other things that are happening to folks that are causing, and layering on that trauma every day. So I do think for me, and I just wanna make this really clear, that I think we're at an all-of-the-above strategy moment. This is not a time for us to pick winners and losers. If this is a matter, this is, even if we ramp Project Room Key up to Level One Hundred and get every hotel that Danielle and our team can possibly get online, that is not gonna be enough rooms for everybody. And so we are also talking about short, like, the warming centers and shelters. We are also talking about safe camping and parking, we're talking about all of it. And that's just a matter of, like, where we're at right now in this crisis, and what it's gonna take to try to stabilize as many of the ten thousand people on our streets as we can, who are constituents. So I do, um, wanna start with a couple of points for follow-up for next week, which I think would be helpful if we could pull it off, but I also recognize this might take a little bit of time. One thing that has been frustrating me ever since we started working on the land trust was how, what lots do we own at all stages? I don't, if they're leased, if they're being used for something, if we think we're gonna use them for something, what are all the buildings and lots that we own as a city, that SHRA owns, that different jurisdictions own, so we can put all of those assets on the table in our discussion? And maybe it's next week, maybe it's in the next master plan workshop, but at some point, I really wanna have a conversation, like, this twenty-five-acre parcel, I mean, I know others have been here longer and know more about that history, but that kinda caught me off-guard, cuz I thought, wow, we've got a twenty-five-acre parcel that we own? Like, I wonder what else we own that we could be using? And I know the city auditor did a report saying we own, I think, ninety acres of potential surplus property a few years ago, and I wanna talk about that, cuz I think we really need to put everything on the table for how we move forward. Um, and I also wanna talk about what it's gonna look like to lease or buy private property. And so I do wanna ask the city attorney a question, I know I saw her on here somewhere, Susanna. Um, we were talking this weekend, um, in the midst of my own grief, and I really have been hearing a lot from my constituents who really wanna talk about using vacant buildings, using vacant lots that might be privately held. Um, I actually have a few lots in my district that staff just told me are held by essentially, like, inactive corporations that are no longer, like, actively filing. So like, what are our options as a city, Susanna, I guess? Um, like, the range of that, if we wanted to enter into some sort of arrangement in a private lot or a private building, what would that look like for the city to, to take those steps? Just so we can bring that into the conversation as well.
Uh, sure, Councilmember, um, as we spoke, uh, I think it was earlier today, uh, the city obviously could enter into negotiations to lease and/or purchase any private property. Um, I know one of the questions was, could the city take by eminent domain? I think, uh, the city, the city could, however, that's a pretty convoluted process, and to acquire it would likely be two, three years down the line. And then because of all of the various processes that have to be followed, including valuation, so, uh, likely the better, um, faster solution is to pursue leasing and/or purchasing the properties.
Okay. And you were telling me that because we've declared the emergency declaration, that it, it doesn't mean we have to do necessarily a bunch of improvements, like, we're kinda doing it at the gallery, or we could just jump in and roll as quickly as possible?
Yeah, one of the things that we identified early on at the request of the council was, uh, uh, when we got, when the council adopted the emergency shelter, um, crisis, it does avail the city of, uh, if we have city-owned property or city-leased property, we determined that with the Grove Avenue Shelter, that there are certain, uh, building codes requirements for habitability that are, um, for, the best way to say it, are relaxed, uh, not all, uh, because there's certainly, obviously, health and safety issues need to, but it does make it simpler, um, or more streamlined. And that was the purpose of availing ourselves of the emergency shelter crisis, um, relax, relaxation of the regulations.
Perfect, thank you. Um, so yeah, I think that's another conversation that we'll bring in through our task force, and I would encourage my colleagues to explore as well as what private property owners in your districts might be interested in entering into some sort of lease with us, cuz I think, I know some of you are talking about that, but I wanna fully explore what we could be doing with that. Um, my next question is more for Howard and Danielle, because this is, um, FEMA money is reimbursable, and on my understanding, it was seventy-five percent, now it's a hundred percent. That ramp up was retroactive. So what is the status of us getting reimbursed for prior activity that we've done under FEMA? And where does that money go when we get it back, um, from the federal government?
I'm happy to start on this one. Um, so we have mostly used grant funding sources in, in past activities, and our understanding and looking into that more deeply is most of that's not gonna be eligible for reimbursement, because it was already a grant either from the federal or state government. But as we're using, um, local resources, or what we're doing with the five million is essentially setting aside future reimbursement revenue, um, then that fund could continue to be recycled and reused for the FEMA-eligible groups.
And how long is that taking to get money back from FEMA? Have we already attempted to file for that?
So through the Great Plates Process, I think it, I, I think once we set up a project, it gets easier, but initially, it may take a couple of months to get kind of the cycle going so that they could review the project itself and, and set up the, the, the system with us. But we've been in conversations with both CalOES and the FEMA folks, as you know.
Yeah.
Councilmember, uh, this is Danielle Bowers, just to, uh, echo that, she's absolutely right, it can take a couple of months, but, uh, to clarify where the initial funds came from, it did come from my office that was dedicated to emergency response. And so that initial forty thousand at least, I believe they, uh, they get some additional funds as well, that can get recycled right back into other programs.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think obviously we need to make whole some of the places where we've, uh, taken money from to try to make this work, but I also would really like to see a commitment for us to use the reimbursed amount to go back into additional programming for unhoused folks, um, so that it doesn't just get kinda sucked back into other things. But I think that, like you said, to see this grow and continue to get replenished would be the goal, and... I mean, I'm gonna go back to a conversation we had after we declared our state of emergency, and I think Howard and Danielle, and I see Bridget on the call, I mean, teed it up really perfectly, which is that I think we made a commitment when we declared that emergency declaration to do whatever it was gonna take for us to ensure that no more folks died on our streets. And I do commend what staff has been able to do so far. The partnership with the advocates, the standing up of shelters has been really Herculean and has gone way faster than probably anything has ever happened at the city before. And I recognize that that's not easy to do, but I also wanna make sure we're resourcing you appropriately, cuz what I see is Danielle and Bridget, um, and Danielle and others, like, doing everything you can to stand up as quickly as you can, and I don't feel like we've given city staff enough money to do this as well as you can. And like, I don't wanna just talk about what it's gonna take to keep open the warming centers through March thirty-first, and then what it's gonna take to stand up more hotels. Like, I'd actually like to talk about what it would look like to do that longer, and like, what, like, can we start talking about either today or next week reauthorizing Howard for another million dollars, so that we can make the commitment to keep the warming centers open? Because I think we should be at least looking through till when we finish this master plan, if not longer, so that we can have that. And I wanna tee that up, whether it's tonight or next week, because I think we need to make more of a budget commitment, and I don't support moving the money from the warming centers. I know that it was just a procedural thing, but like, I wanna see us invest more money into these programs so that we can have the money grow to meet the commitment that I feel like we made the day after that storm. Um...
Councilmember, if I may, uh, absolutely, you know, I'm always gonna welcome more money, more resources for our team to do their jobs, for sure. Uh, but that, I think you hit on the very question. Uh, we are, to be real clear, the mayor hit this a couple of times earlier on. We, we have not taken any money from the warming center, uh, money, uh, because we funded all three shelters that we have right now, warming centers right now, through the end of March. And the reason I'm calling the question up for the council to consider next week is, are we gonna go beyond March thirty-first? And that is the conversation that I'd like for us to have next week. And so like the mayor said, if we decide to go beyond March thirty-first, uh, the, the money will be there. I mean, I have authorization, you all have given me authorization for up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, signing authority that could, there'd be, um, a gap or lapse between, uh, the money that we already have allocated and under contract, and when this decision is made. I have plenty of cushion there. So, like the mayor said, the money's not the issue, it's the policy on whether we go beyond March thirty-first.
I'll add to that, if I may. When, uh, when the council makes the decision, and assuming it is a decision to go beyond March thirty-first, a million dollars is way too low. There will, there will need to be more resources, and that's part, that's part of the question here. Um, again, we're restraining ourselves for, for the, to prepare for the debate next week, but a million dollars is too low.
So to clarify then, what Howard's saying, because I wanna make sure that I'm super clear, as you can tell is my practice. Um, you know, so say, you know, right now, for example, I've been talking to my constituents about the fact when this WX freeway begins, and Bridget and I have been working closely on this, and Danielle, all of the encampments under the WX freeway are gonna get displaced, um, into the neighborhoods, and that's hundreds of people that we know about that are immediately not gonna have a place to go, who've at least had some semblance of, you know, shelter from the rain, um, in, in the minimal sense. Um, and so one thing we're working on right now, right, in partnership with the mayor, is talking to Caltrans about how do we leave some of these other lots to either set up tiny homes or do something like that as quickly as possible, because this construction is starting, what, Bridget, in like two weeks? Um, so we're moving as quickly as we can. And so if, say tomorrow, and I know this is a long shot, but if, say, tomorrow, Caltrans comes back and says, okay, we're gonna let you use these lots, would we be able to immediately pull resources to do that, even though we're moving resources from the fund right now? Or would we need to wait until next week in the reauthorization?
No, absolutely not. I mean, if, if that came to, uh, to fruition, I would use the authority that I currently have, I would immediately come back to the council the following week and ask for more of those.
Okay.
It's not an issue, I can come back on any given Tuesday if I exceed the, the authority I have right now. So really, it is the policy discussion, uh, that I'm seeking some clarity in our, in our opinion.
Okay, thank you, Howard. I will just put my stake in the ground then for next week, that I think the warming centers should be open longer than the thirty-first, and I'll look forward to the continued conversation.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Valenzuela. Um, next, we've got Councilmember Laloie, and then Ashby.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maria. First of all, eh, once again, I really want to thank Danielle and Bridget Dean for um, all the hard work that you guys are doing. So I, I truly appreciate it. Based on your experience uh, from when you started till now, with some of the, the, the funding that has been injected to this wonderful cause. What are the numbers? Are we seeing a decline in the unsheltered within our city? It has it kind of stayed the same? Do we see an increase? Do we have any data on that?
Council member, are you asking from the time of the start of this program or a longer term period? I'm just trying to understand the timeframe here.
Let's say within a year. Within the last, within the last six months.
So I think we have continued to see an increase in our unsheltered population in the wake of COVID and all of the impacts there. And prior to that, we had seen an increase between uh, twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen in the point in time counts. We are doing another point in time count, which is the, the census, essentially the count that gets done every two years of our unsheltered population. And this year it was complicated by COVID, of course, but they are trying to do some, some updates on the data. And that looks like countywide where our numbers are at, but I think we're all anticipating that it's, it's going to be just as high as twenty nineteen, if not higher, so.
Um, and the reason I'm asking this is that usually if there is a situation and it requires attention and help and resource. There, there's a set amount that we sit back and go, if we have this amount, we can fix this problem. Have we sat back and say, what is that magic number? Because when we just randomly just spend money, you know, without a, a nice calculated way. You know, i- it just doesn't lead up to an end. It's just a continue, it's a revolving door. It just continues going. And then two years from now, we look back and say, okay, we spent a hundred fifty million dollars on, on this. Not only weren't able to really decrease the number of unsheltered, but it's actually doubled in size. So now what is the city to do at that point? So that's, that's one of the questions that I have. Number two, um, I always hear affordable housing, affordable housing, 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 housing heights. But I've yet to hear substance abuse facilities, uh, mental health facilities. And as much as um, I agree with my, my colleagues that we need affordable housing. But I really cannot accept the fact that that's all, that's the only thing that's missing from this equation. If we create ten thousand affordable housing, we're done with this issue. Because from every report that I've looked at and the data that I have visited, it clearly shows that unless we can figure out how to combat the, the substance abuse and the, and the mental health, we will never solve this problem. Um, so I think that's something that we need to discuss as well, that affordable housing, it's, it's just a piece of the puzzle. How big? That's debatable. I've seen reports that say affordable housing at the, is at the bottom of the reason why we get people, you know, become unsheltered, that substance abuse and mental abuse is, is much higher on, on, on the, on the fighting pole on that. My other question is, you know, we, we've come in and we've decided we're going to tackle this as a, as a whole group. If we have ten thousand on shelter, we're going to try to find housing for ten thousand. Yet, you know, there's some groups that are smaller that we can definitely help immediately, you know. If I'm not mistaken, we have about six hundred veterans that are unsheltered. You know, um, mothers and children. These are two groups that I believe that if we put, you know, eighty percent of our focus on them, then we can easily at least, you know, lock it and, and, and fix that issue with these two, two different categories. So, and when I see this, and I'm, I'm totally in, in agreement with my colleagues such as council member Venezuela or, or um, uh, council member Harris that yes, we need housing. But at what point do we say, okay, we're good with housing? What's that magic number? And then with the individuals that need the extra help with, you know, substance abuse or mental health, where, where's the funding on that? Do we have money that we're going to set aside and utilize it to hel- help these individuals? Because, you know, let's face it, this, these two categories, affordable housing is not going to fix it. It's going to make us feel great about it, right? We can sleep easy, easy at nighttime thinking we gave, we gave them affordable housing. But it's not the solution. They're going to be out within two weeks again, right? So um, that, that, that's, that, that's a question that I have, uh, the concerns that I have on that. I think the Cal Expo, um, I know it's come up on numerous occasions, but really to me, that's, that's the way that we can literally, you know, fix this issue, uh, at least for, for limited time. So we can bring more individuals, we can get a better data on them, so we can find a solution. And then another topic that I wanted to just bring up and hopefully, you know, my, my experienced colleagues can assist me on this, is that you know, since January till now, every one of our meetings, we've talked about how we can help the unsheltered, which I'm hundred percent and, and you know, you, you, you know, you've seen me talk about it. But at the same time, not, I have not heard a single word as far as the current residents within our community, that our homeowners or home renters, where, where are they fitting into this? The, the local businesses that are getting affected with this, where are they fitting in this? What are we going to do? For their concerns and, and, and complaints? So I, I, again, I think this is a much bigger picture than let's just build houses and affordable housing and, and we're done. Because I, I can tell you, when I talk to my constituents and some of the constituents, constituents from different districts, you know, these are homeowners that are very frustrated because they're going out and, and, and picking up trash and what have you. And they don't have that privacy that they're used to within their own house. And we can, I can tell them, well, don't be selfish, you know, look what we, what's going on outside, so what? They, they do have certain rights. And I, I like to see us discussing that as well. And, and consider these individuals, the homeowners, the home renters and businesses as, 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 as this topic moves on. So um, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Mayor, is it okay if I jump in for just thirty seconds? I'm sorry, you're on mute, Mayor. You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, I, I want to say something first in response to council member Laloie's comments, because I think they're important. First of all, I want to, and we're not debating next week, again, we really aren't, but I just want to say in terms of educating each other about what, what, what this is about here. We all agree that it is not just about housing and affordable housing, that mental health and substance abuse treatment and services are essential. But the question we are presented with as a city, not a health and human services agency, is how do we get started with people? Second, and so anybody who says our policy is about, or our direction is about housing or shelter only, respectfully is missing the broader picture, and we need to do a better job of educating each other and the community about what we really mean by a continuum of care. Secondly, you better believe the homeowners and the residents and the businesses matter in this debate. But if we don't make the right decisions here and make them to scale in some form, leaving the question for next week to next week, but in some form, then our businesses and our neighborhoods are going to continue to suffer greatly. This is first and foremost a humanitarian issue, of course it is. But as mayor of this city and all of you as council members, we also have a responsibility to our businesses and our residents. And they are suffering immensely because of these tent encampments and because of this out of control situation. So as you focus on the solution and how to vote, the only thing that I will commend to you for next week and in the weeks after is go big. Because if we don't go big in some form, you are left then with what your constituents and you are seeing and complaining about every day. Jeff Harris is right. And Jeff's been great on these issues, and he and I may disagree next week, I don't know yet. But we should be debating the means to the end, not the end. Cause the end is to get massive numbers of people off the streets and indoors. And if we don't do that, and if we're not about that, and if we don't have the collaborative partners to be able to do that, then we are giving up. And nobody's given up here. So I think your comments are important, but I think it was, uh, it's important for me as the mayor of this city to respond in that way. You better believe it's about the businesses and the neighborhoods in addition to the people suffering. And it is not about housing and shelter only. It's about how we get started on a continuum of care to be able to make a difference. Means to the end next week. Katie, I'm sorry, did you want to, council member Valenzuela?
No, no, we can move on with the queue.
Okay, uh, Mayor Protem Ashby.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. So I guess first of all, I would just say we're a dynamic, big city with smart people on our city council and very intelligent, professional staff. We can do more than one thing at a time. And, you know, count me into the group committed to warming centers when we need them. And when warming centers don't make sense, but we still need to get people off the streets, count me in for supporting the RFPs for service providers who will do shelters for people who need safe places to be. And I don't think that that negates our ability to move forward with other proposals. Affordable housing, wraparound service models, mental health service models. It would be a lot easier if we had redevelopment funds, but we don't, and we'll have to, we'll have to figure our way a- around that issue. But we need funding for some of these programs. Mental health wraparound service programs like Mercy Housing or Hotel Berry downtown are the two last ones that we built. They're expensive and you have to pay service providers and, and we'll have to partner, and those go through S H R A. And you need the county to provide the service providers for them. But council member Laloie's not wrong, we need more of those, for sure. We also need more things like, you know, La Valentina and Lavender Court and all the other low-income housing and very low-income housing that we've pieced together in this city over the last few years. I, you know, next week will be an interesting dialogue, but I don't see or foresee anyone on this council saying that we don't want to have warming centers open when warming centers are warranted. We should definitely be doing that. And I think we've also found a way to do it uh, when we don't have the county's permission, but to do it in a way where we bring on service providers and do it right. So I'm, I'm proud of that effort, and I think we all can be, and I think we can make it work. I just want to be clear, my, personally, me, council, just one, one council member from District One. I think we're missing the mark if our number one goal is not reaching a functional zero population for homeless women, children and families by the end of the year. I think we can do this on top of shelters, and I think we can do this on top of warming centers. I think we can do this on top of the hotel voucher program. I think we can do this on top of mental health services. I think by the end of this calendar year, we, the city of Sacramento, with all the people on this council involved, can get to a functional zero for women with children and families that are on the street. I think we can do that, and I think we can do the wraparound services they need to be successful as well. It starts though with actually getting things done. So for example, like to take this moment to thank council member Valenzuela, council member Vang, and council member Harris, who actually supported the effort to bring two million dollars forward in an RFP for women and children. All of you voted for it, and I appreciate that. But it should already be on the street. It is not. The RFP is hung up in City Hall, waiting for one council member to comment on it, and that is not okay. That RFP should have been out weeks ago. There are women with children on the street every day, and I get those calls. I know council member Valenzuela gets those calls. I know Bridget Dean gets those calls every day, and Daniel Foster too. And we are anxious to have that RFP in place because it is two million dollars more in solutions towards reaching that functional zero. So while most of this conversation can wait till next week, the RFP should not. I hope by next Tuesday, it's out and that people are applying for it. That is far too long of a process for us on an RFP that we've done before. And let me just say this to all council staff, we have extraordinary professional staff. We should trust them, allow Bridget Dean to do this work and get the RFP out there. She and Danielle can do this. So that's it for me, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We've got, who, uh, council member Vang has not spoken yet.
Thanks, Mayor.
Or please.
Okay, I'll keep this short, and I will too try my best to resist from debating. First, I just want to say thank you so much to staff, to Bridget for your hard work, Danielle, uh, and the entire team. Um, just for, um, you know, your heart and hustle and making it happen. Um, and I absolutely agree with Councilwoman uh, Ashby regarding reaching, uh, reaching function, uh, functional zero. I think that has got to be our goal. Um, I know we have to talk, and I hear you, uh, council member Sean Laloie about making sure we got some benchmarks, right? Cause you're about the outcomes, um, and so I hear you on that. Um, but I just wanted also to share, share with you. Uh, while I, I agree uh, with you absolutely on like making sure that we measure our outcomes. Um, you know, the research also shows that the longer folks are living on streets, they have a shorter lifespan. So we got to do everything we can to make sure that we, we get them shelter and wraparound services. But I absolutely hear you on the outcomes piece. That's something that I also have been thinking a lot about as well, given that I have a woman, a, a woman nav- navigation shelter in my area that's going to, that has funding for two years. And thinking about when the women exit out of the navigation center and they get housing, right, it's for six months and they get some casework. But what happens after that six months, right? What happens if we don't have a safety net and supportive services for them? Then they go back to the street and we're back where we're at again. So I hear you on all of that. And really hoping that, you know, as we think about the comprehensive plan, that we really think about figuring out safety nets. Um, I'm really looking forward to next week's conversation as well. Um, I do absolutely agree with council member Valenzuela uh, regarding making sure that we don't take dollars away uh, from the warming shelter. Um, I think that it is absolutely needed, and I appreciate um, Mayor Steinberg reaffirming that, that is, that is not, that is not the plan here, right? That we're going to do everything we can to expand it. So I appreciate the mayor uh, uh, for, for reaffirming that. Um, and I look forward to the conversation. I also just also want to acknowledge council member Harris regarding, um, you know, his, his recommendation regarding Cal Expo. I don't know what the barriers are, maybe uh, council member Harris might be able to share, I don't know. Would love to hear the insight because that, um, Cal Expo has been mentioned so many times since I've been on this council. And I'm curious now just to understand and try to understand what, what the challenges are, why have we not moved on that? Um, maybe that's another conversation that we can add to the larger conversation next week as well. Um, but just wanted to put my two cents and just think the entire staff for your hard work. I think as a council, we can set direction, but it's really staff on the ground doing the hard work every day. And so thank you, Howard, to you and your, your entire team. Um, so that's it. Try and keep it short, Mayor, because I know we got a lot to talk about next week and really looking forward to a very robust uh, debate.
Yep, thank you very much. I know we've got two more members around the bend who've already, I think, spoken, maybe not, but final comments, council members. final comments, Councilmembers Geta and Harris.
I'll, I'll keep it short. I just forgot and actually on a positive note, so I wanted to first thank all Bridget and our city staff and also First Steps Community and also the good people over at the, our Capital City 70 Advantage for opening up a warming center. And, you know, really bringing in community. And that, now that's prompted other of our churches in the area to wanting to do that and step up to that in that area in making sure that we're opening up more warming centers for folks. And so I think that that shared commitment is starting. So I just wanted to close off by thanking folks on that. And the fact that we are creating now a positive movement of everyone pulling together.
Thank you. Councilman Harris.
Sorry, Mayor, I'm working on a phone here. It's, it's not working all that well. Just a brief comment, you know, that we can debate till we're blue in the face, but the answers to getting the best outcomes for the most people with the money that we have available are buried in our very competent staff. We could turn Danielle and Bridget and LaShelle loose and they could bring to us tremendous recommendations of how to get where we can get to, to the best outcomes with the resources that we can gather. And I think that we just have to acknowledge that the expertise that we already have on staff, the answers are there and we should rely on them heavily. That's all.
I think it is a vital collaborative between our expert and accomplished staff and the policymakers here to set the direction and to define the end. Is the end functional zero as it's described for women and children? Is it to set a numerical goal as we are seeking to do through our master plan? To bring people indoors and to serve them for whatever has caused their homelessness in the first place? That's really what this debate is about. There are many means to the end. But it's defining that end and going big. Going big, I believe is the only way to go. Because every other option leaves our constituents frustrated, leaves us essentially alone trying to grapple with this problem and isn't what the people expect of us. Stay tuned next week. Thank you. Let's take a, a vote on the item, which again, I think has been clearly interpreted to not take money from the warming centers. But to simply make sure that we can invest quickly down in the motel voucher side with the existing available resources we have. Is there a motion and a second?
I'll move the staff report.
Second.
Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Loloey?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, you know, thank you all very, very much. Let's now move to item 18.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Mario Lara, Director of Youth Parks and Community in Richmond. The item before you this evening is whether to pass a motion approving the placement of a Black Lives Matter sign at McClatchy Park by accepting the sign as the city of Sacramento's government speech and authorizing a temporary license agreement for its installation. As you're aware, the statement Black Lives Matters refers to a national movement seeking social justice for black individuals and communities. In the summer of 2020, a resident Zach Crowbridge donated a Black Lives Matter sign to a group who erected the sign at Curtis Park. Some members of the public placed candles and other items below the sign and attached messages to it. However, the sign was vandalized and the resident who created it took the sign down and replaced it and is now requesting that the sign be placed at McClatchy Park. A letter of support from Oak Park Neighborhood Association was attached to the request and is also attached to the council report. As well, a letter of support from Black Lives Matter Sacramento was received and is attached to the item. Given that the nature of the sign is to express an opinion, to allow the city to control what signs can be placed on public property, the city council would need to approve the sign as the statement of the city as government speech. If the city council approves this item, a license agreement will be executed to establish the term of the sign placement. The recommendation is that the temporary sign placement be for a period of six months with options to extend and that the sign would be installed in accordance with all permit and engineering requirements at the corner of Fifth Avenue and 34th Street at McClatchy Park and that it would be maintained in a safe condition. The Parks and Community Enrichment Commission voted unanimously to support the council's approval of the Black Lives Matter sign as the city's opinion statement and placing this in McClatchy Park for a temporary period. This concludes my brief background presentation, Mayor, and I turn the discussion back over to you and the Vice Mayor.
Thank you very, very much. Councilmember Shenier, of course, it's your district, you led on this issue. Why don't you make some comments if you want now, or we can take the public testimony either way.
What I'd like to do, Mayor, is turn it over to Zach, who has constructed the sign and then asked two of our community members, Tanya Faison, who's here from Black Lives Matter, and Gracie Phillips, who is here from President of the Oak Park Neighborhood Association. I know we have one caller, I believe, also, and then I'd like to make a couple of comments at that point.
Of course. Okay. Please welcome to-
Thank you. Yeah, I'll keep this brief and start us off here. I want to keep this as fast as possible, reserve as much time for Gracie and Tanya as possible, but quick intro is just that I'm, my name's Zach Crowbridge. I'm a resident of District Two. And I created the Black Lives Matter sign that's up for discussion today. I created this monument to black lives lost to police violence back in late May of 2020. And I call it Project Say Their Names. I want to be really clear because there were some misconceptions, especially in the last meeting that we had, that I was not paid by the city to create this. This piece was not commissioned by the city of Sacramento or any other state or local organization. I've not received any financial support at all for this project from anyone. I simply created this myself and many outspoken members of the black community have asked me to put it somewhere permanent in historically black communities. So that's why, that's how we settled on McClatchy Park. So if you haven't seen it, it's a large wooden sign that says Black Lives Matter laid out end to end. It would be about 24 feet long. And it contains written on it the names of 347 black people who were killed by police while they were unarmed. Unfortunately, this number has grown since I created this piece and I'll have to be adding some more names to reflect recent and historical events that, you know, have come to light. So the final structure that we're asking to install at McClatchy will be, will be about 16 feet wide and just under six feet tall. I made this piece just after the George Floyd murder in an effort to use the hobbies that white privilege has afforded me to try to create something meaningful for the black community. I've done my best to take a backseat to the sign so that I, as a white man, am not getting in the way of black voices being heard. And I hope it's understood here tonight that I'm simply just a caretaker of the project, not the owner. I really believe that the project, that the sign belongs to all the names on it and the community itself. So just a few thank yous, obviously to the black community that's been so supportive of this project and making it happen. Thank you to Gracie of the Oak Park Neighborhood Association for the letter of recommendation and helping to sort of orchestrate that conversation in Oak Park. Thank you to Tanya for your support as part of Sacramento Black Lives Matter. Thank you to Black Zebra Media for your channel of communication and help with direction and ideas on this piece. Thank you so much to Mario for connecting the dots and making this happen. Thank you to Jay Shenier for your incredible support for this project and all the different news media outlets that have supported it. So I'm excited to pass this over to Gracie and Tanya. I'm not sure who wants to go first to highlight the voices that really needed to be heard in this conversation.
Thanks, Zach. Tanya, do you want to go ahead?
Sure, thank you. So my name's Tanya Faison. I'm with Black Lives Matter Sacramento. I moved to Oak Park in 1985, January 1985, when I was 10 years old. I lived there throughout the fifth and sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade and throughout high school. So I have really, really strong ties to Oak Park. I support this wholeheartedly that this should go in this neighborhood and it should go in McClatchy Park. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Okay, so I support this wholeheartedly. I'm going to give you some reasons as to why. First, I'm going to start off with some historical reasons as to why it appears through actions that black lives do not matter in this area. Throughout history, we've had white flight when black folks move into the neighborhood. We've had redlining that's been done by federal government and then later on done by city government under the guise of trying to fix this, bring a solution to the problem of the redlining. We've had the Black Counterparty who's historically started in Oak Park, the Sacramento chapter of the Black Counterparty, historically started in Oak Park, had a house in Oak Park that got shot up. All of the resources that were provided to the community through this house were destroyed. And then you have, more recently, you've got the gentrification. You have through gentrification, the removal of a lot of businesses that have been there forever, like Broadway Soul Food Takeout, who had two weeks to come up with more money to stay where they were at because their, their block got purchased. And so as a result, they had to leave. You've got Oak Park, North Oak Park and Central Oak Park is the only place in Sacramento that is policed so heavily. We've got CHP located in that vicinity that goes through. We've got Sacramento Sheriff that, that strolls through. We've got SAC PD. We have the University of Pacific Police Department. We have UC Davis Police Department that often ventures away from UC Davis Hospital to, you know, pull people over on Stockton Boulevard. And then you have what used to be called Collatton Security, who is contracted with the city and the county, and now they're called Allied. They do a lot of policing in that neighborhood as well. So this is the only, the only neighborhood in Sacramento that has so much law enforcement presence. And most of that presence impacts black folks and brown folks that live in that area or that are unhoused in that area due to the gentrification that's happened in that area. And then on top of that, you have intra-community violence and we saw a lot of that this summer. And so those are all the reasons as to why I feel like it is so important to put a sign up in this park, not only as a gesture of, you know, goodwill toward the people and as a reminder to everybody in the community that black folks, your lives do matter. And then a reminder to non-black folks that black lives, every single black life matters in this community, but also as a commitment from the city and the agencies within the city of Sacramento to not repeat history and to not, you know, there are certain agencies that continue to oppress black folks in this community to remind them to not continue to oppress black folks in this community. And then to do more than, you know, performative gestures. We need, we need real substance to follow this. And this should be a commitment on behalf of the city of Sacramento to guarantee that they're going to put in real efforts going forward. Lastly, I do want to also stress the fact that part of the request is that, you know, this is supposed to go up for a year and we really need some type of Black Lives Matter themed art or structure put up that's permanent and that's interactive with community so that it's not a temporary gesture of performance. We just need more, we need more resolutions. And this is a step in that direction. But I really want it to lead toward more actual resolutions, more actual substance by the city of Sacramento. But I do support it going up and I really appreciate the fact that we are able to put this on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Tanya. Gracie?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Elgracie Phillips, the current president of the Oak Park Neighborhood Association. And we, on January 14th, we voted, the Oak Park Neighborhood Association Board voted to strongly encourage the approval of Mr. Crowbridge's Black Lives Matter sign at McClatchy Park. It was based on some input that we had from neighbors on our Facebook group page who on a basic vote came for what, 140 to zero? And, you know, 38 other comments, people saying, hey, we really want this at our park. It's, it is important because it is our park. It is important because black lives do matter. It's important because there is still a systemic problem. You know, there are things that we would like to see in Oak Park, specifically that will help to curb some of the, the law enforcement violence that we've had to deal with. Basically, you know, the sign is a great gesture. And, you know, to paraphrase, it's not the answer and we need to remember that, you know, the sign, although temporary, should not be torn down and thrown away when its tour is done. It needs to go on a worldwide tour. It needs to go to other, other neighborhoods, other areas in Sacramento to not only spread the, the message that Black Lives Matter, but also, you know, to, 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 to share with those who have the privilege to not necessarily have to tap into the Black Lives Matter movement. Some of the things that we do look for is, you know, an increase in non-police violence. Sorry, an increase in non-police responses for mental health crises and investments in emergency dispatch system. I know that's a big one, but it would be cool. And also investment in some of our existing community-based programs. We have a lot of programs that are operating in our area that could use support. So it's not just the fact that we have a sign that says Black Lives Matter. It is the action and the city, you know, we need to put our foot in it and we need to do a lot more than, you know, and performative is the word that has come up numerous times. And I, I believe you can do a lot through, through certain performances, but there has to be action as well. So you know, Oak Park is, the Neighborhood Association is absolutely jazzed to have this sign up. But we know that there are bigger problems, so we have to recognize that this is not the answer. This is just a beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Gracie. Mayor, I know there's two public callers, if you want to do those, and then other members of the council, and then I'd like to finish it up.
Yes, of course.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have three callers. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Jenny and I am from Sacramento and I'm just calling to support this project. I really want to echo what some of the speaker said that though this is a great first step, I hope that it's not the final step. And I just want to remind everybody that, that, you know, that there's so much work to be done on this front and I hope that nobody sees this as like, okay, we're done now. We, we put up a sign that there's further action within the city to, to make this, you know, a first step into other things. And also to remind everybody that a choice not to put it up at this point is really a choice to say that that in fact, black lives don't matter in the city of Sacramento. So it's, it's literally and figuratively fantastic first step to reminding everyone that black lives do matter, that every single black life matters. Black art matters, black souls, songs, everything, they matter. And I just want to really encourage a yes vote on this, but also for further work to come after the sign. That it's just a first step. Thank you so much. Thank you to Mr. Crowbridge. Thank you to Tanya and Gracie. I appreciate you and the work that you've put into this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, council. My name is Chevis Mays and I live in Citrus Heights, California. And I would just like to say I think it would be very appropriate for the Black Lives Matter signs to go into McClatchy Park. I feel like it will be a historical moment and it shows that Sacramento is standing in solidarity with Black Lives Matter and equality and justice for all people. And so I really hope that this will pass and it will be a monumental moment for Sacramento. And my name is Chevis Mays and that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Councilman Shenier?
Do you want to have the other council members who want to speak and-
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you wanted to go next. I know I-
No, no, I'll go last. Thank you.
Let's go around here. Councilmember Rick Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I read the whole report on this and I've read the history that has happened since the sign was erected. And I want to thank Zach for his work in- And I want to, um, thank Zach for his work in providing this masterpiece to us. And, um, also wanna thank Tanya and Gracie for their comments. When you listen to them, they really have given all the reasons as to why this is something that we should be unanimous in approving. And I don't know that I can say any more than what they've said because they've said it all. I think when you have a neighborhood association that votes unanimously for something like this. And then you have the Parks and Rec Commission that has voted unanimously for this. And you have the council member's support in making this happen. And I think about the schools that we talked about earlier of Oak Ridge Elementary School and Father Keith B. Kenny Elementary School. And all the other schools that are right around there that are maybe not directly in Oak Park. But that could also benefit from this. And when I think about the opportunity for this to become. Something that every student in the school, school can take a field trip to and write a report on. And talk about why black, why, why black lives matter. And why, and how this can be an educational piece to help all of our kids to build pride in themselves. And their families to build pride in themselves. When I think about all the possibilities, all the great possibilities of this, and I think about the history of Oak Park. My first mo- my, my first notion is to put. Just to, to put a motion up, but I wanna save that for Councilmember Chenier. But I do wanna be the second to support his motion once it goes up. Because to me, um, this is something that we should do, something we must do and something is very important that we do do. So, um, I am very much in support of this effort. And the last thing I'll say is, um, I heard that we have a six-month, uh, with an option to extend. And that's the only thing that I disagree with. My motion would be, um, and I'll, I'll amend the motion if it comes up that way. That we commit to a full year and we extend to years as well. I don't know that there's any art piece that we put up in Sacramento that we put it on a six-month piece, uh, with the ability to extend. I don't have that history, but I just don't believe that's something that we would do. And so I don't wanna treat this any different than any other art piece that we have put up in the city of Sacramento. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings. Again, Madam Clerk, if you can help me with the order, please. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela, Vang, Laloie, Guerra, and then Ashby.
Thank you.
And thank you, um, Councilmember Chenier and Zach and the members of the community for bringing this really important, uh, motion before us. Um, it's not lost on me that this is the month of the trials for the officers who killed George Floyd is beginning in Minneapolis. Um, you know, the timing is always right to do what's right, but there's something to me really important about where we stand. And, and making sure that we commemorate the commitment that I know a lot of us made last summer after watching that horrible video. Um, of a man gassing for air and asking for his mother, um, and wanting to make it very clear that, yeah, black lives matter. Uh, black trans lives, black women's lives, all black people's lives matter. And I really wanna commend the movement. I spent the last two weekends, and it did take me two weekends, cuz I found myself kind of a wreck after getting through the first part of the Black Lives Matter memoir. When they call you a terrorist. And if you haven't read that book, I, I strongly, strongly recommend you read that book. It puts the movement, um, in a really important light of the foundation of when it started. And it just, I mean, even now, just talking about it, I'm having trouble like saying the words of how impactful I knew this was important. And I think that it's so important for us to reach outside of our own experiences and recognize what's happening to black people in our country. And stand in solidarity and support and allyship and co-conspiratorship with them to, to rectify what's been going on. Um, you know, this movement's been recognized internationally for the Nobel Peace Prize nomination, which is incredible. And I just think that this is the least we can do and I do hope that this continues. When we talk about our budget and the people's budget, when we talk about, you know, the accountability reforms through the police commission process. We're gonna start looking back at what happened over the last year and beyond, um, that we have a real opportunity. And I think this solidifies our commitment as a city and our statement that we all do believe that black lives, all black lives, um, matter. So thank you again, Councilmember Chenier and everybody for this item.
Thank you. Who's next?
Councilmember Vang.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Councilmember Chenier, uh, Zach and, um, Tanya Faison. And should I say Trustee Phillips, uh, for presenting tonight, um, and sharing with us why, um, you know, it is incredibly important. One, uh, not just, uh, to have the sign up, uh, really calling for the city to also reaffirm in terms of not just our, the, the performative piece. But making sure we're really truly invested in black lives. And so, um, you know, I hear that, um, Tanya and, uh, 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 Lavinia Gracie. Um, and you have my full commitment in that. Um, you know, I think it's incredibly important that this council supports this because, um, you know, the Black Lives Matter movement is our, part of the Sacramento history as well. And it's incredibly important that we stand in solidarity and to make sure that, that we support this. So, um, the only question that I did have, um, because as I was reading articles and in conversation, um, SPOA defines, uh, this. Um, this, uh, artwork as political speech rather than government speech. And just wanted to, uh, get some insight from legal, um, because that's the position of the police union. And I wanted to hear from Susanna, really, uh, just from the city end to make sure that, um, you know. Uh, that's, that's the, that's a conflict or at least what, what was shared with, um, that what I've heard, what it was, what was shared with me. Uh, I am in full support of this, uh, but just wanted to get, um, clarity maybe from legal, um, on the city end on that piece.
Cheryl.
Sure, Councilmember Vang. Uh, Cheryl Patterson is the attorney that worked on this with staffs. So go ahead and turn it over to her.
So, the, the sign clearly expresses an opinion. I don't believe it's political speech technically, but it's clearly an opinion. Um, and the city as a government agency has a right to express its opinion. At the same time, not creating what we call a public forum for everybody else to post whatever else they wanna post in that same space. And so there is a provision in the constitution basically that allows government agencies to have a government speech and put their opinion out there. Um, and so we can, that's why we're asking the council to approve Zach's sign as the city's government speech. So we can put it up in the park and control anybody else from posting anything else they wanna post.
Yeah, cuz I just wanna make sure, um, that, um, and I think that's really good for clarity. Because what I don't want to see happening, right, and I wanna make sure, I think, uh, I'm in full support of this. And I wanna make sure we pass this unanimously, um, but wanna make sure I understand the legal piece, uh, just in case. You know, you get other folks, um, that may want to, may, they want to be, may want to have hate speech and I don't want that in this city. Um, but I fully support this and thank you, Councilmember Chenier, uh, for, for, for moving this forward. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next?
Councilmember Laloie.
Thank you very much. Um, I wanna thank obviously Zach. Thank you so much. What a way to represent District Two. Thank you. Um, I also wanna thank, uh, Ms., uh, Faison, uh, my apologies if I'm mispronouncing that, and also Ms. Phillips. You know, I, 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 as an immigrant, I've been in this country for a little bit over twenty years. And I have never seen this country so divided. I've never seen the state of California so divided. And I've never seen our wonderful city of Sacramento so divided. So, it, it's, it's, it really hurts me when. Us as human beings, we wanna take a position of who's better than the next person. When in reality, we're all one hundred percent equal. So, Zach, I love the sign, uh, great job, um. But I do have my concerns. Black Lives Matter movement cannot be identified by a wonderful design sign by Zach. The movement. We have to make sure we support the movement with bringing and investing money in communities that are black and brown. More than ever before. Because unless we commit to that and bring more investments to the communities of black and brown. And give more opportunities, more job opportunities. Then again, what have we really accomplished with Black Lives Matter? So, again, I wanna thank everyone, but our job is just getting started on this movement. We're not even remotely close to where we should be. The movement started some time ago. We're still driving in communities that are heavily black and brown. And we haven't seen any kind of movement in those communities. We haven't seen anything in upgrading, uh, uh, infrastructure. Uh, we haven't seen upgrading of our schools. Uh, we haven't seen upgrading of programs or, or having extra programs for the youth in these communities. So, as much as I'm a hundred percent is, is supportive of this sign and a great job, but in a bigger picture. Um, we, we can relax by saying, well, we have a sign there, mission accomplished. Um, i- it's a crazy world that we live in. And it really bothers me that, you know, we have people that take the position. As, as identifying who is better than the next person. And we've seen some issues that was in my district last week, uh, with one of the schools, which was absolute embarrassment. So, this is much bigger than Sacramento or a particular community in Sacramento. And I hope that us as collective members of this, uh, uh, council members of this city. We actually take the time and have discussions about what can we do as a group to make sure these communities are well-funded. To make sure the youth in these communities are well taken care of. So we minimize these issues that we're faced with today. This division that is really destroying the very, um, essence of this country. So again, I, I wanna thank you, Zach, and everybody that was involved with this project. But, uh, my dear colleagues, um, this is a much bigger picture. This movement hasn't really broken the surface yet. Because I, I think that the way the media covered this movement was absolutely despicable. And I think the movement and its true, uh, creators and players. Their, the sky is the limit of what we have to do. We have to bring banks into these communities. We have to make sure our school system is much better in these communities. So, with that said, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Laloie.
Councilmember Guerra.
Yep.
Great. Uh, thank you very much. I wanna thank also, uh, uh, Trustee, uh, Phillips and, uh, Tanya Faison. And then the Oak Park Neighborhood Association and also our artist, uh, Mr. Zach, uh, Trobridge for, for this effort here. And I, I, uh, I completely, uh, support partic- this and, and specifically in a, in a part. Because, um, you know, art is powerful in a, in a, in a way to educate, um, not only just youth, but families. And encourage that conversation and having it in a public setting where families are together and can understand that. I, and, and, and I just recall, you know, being a young kid looking at, you know, some of the Diego Riveras and Oroscos. And, and seeing how powerful they were. And I think this is an, an important piece to look at our, uh, community and city spaces to be able to be educational places. So, you know, art has that strength of, of being able to, uh, to, uh, convey a different, uh, set of information and education. And in a much different way that I think is so powerful. So I, I think, I wanna, I wanna thank also, you know, uh, Tanya for, uh, for thinking through about like where we're gonna put this at or why we're gonna put this at. Because one of the issues that we, uh, began to look at, and I wanna give a little credit to Supervisor Phil Serna on the, uh, the, uh. Bringing to us the, uh, the, uh, the, the deaths in our infant rates and, and, and addressing the, the how many, how many of our black youth were dying. Uh, early on and targeting and making sure that we're focusing resources on that. I think the, the, the thought process that was, uh, put in, in the, the selection, I think is important there. So, one, I wanna thank, uh, that effort and yes, I, I agree with the, that, the, that we have to go beyond, um, just the six months. We have to go beyond just the art piece, but also those critical investments in our community. So, a big thank you and I'm here to support, uh, uh, again, this level of public art in our community.
Thank you very much, Guerra. Mayor Prokhor.
Thanks, Mayor. So, uh, yeah, I, I'm very supportive. I think this is a, a great idea. The only kind of concern I have is that, you know, I went to SAC High too and McGeorge. And I think it's brilliant that it starts in Oak Park, but. It, there are other parts of the city where I think if we could do, uh, some type of circulation. And maybe visited each district and we each chose a park for a short period of time and then sent it back to McClatchy. It might be really meaningful. Uh, I, I think, you know, just. Making sure that each part of the city knows that each council member agrees that all black lives matter. And we, we had a interactive, Tanya Faison said, it would be great to have, you know, something more permanent, more interactive. And we had an interactive art piece in a library in my district. It didn't have quite as meaningful of a statement. But it was really popular and we did rotate it. It went to Smud, it came to me. And ultimately, people liked it so much that we, we built one like it in honor of the librarian who was killed in my district. And I'm just thinking about that art piece and how powerful it is and how interactive it was and how it was, uh, mobile and able to go places. So, if, if, uh, Zach's artwork, it can, is durable enough to make it through a couple of years and go visit each of our districts. I think that would be fantastic and if we maybe, uh, wanna do something even more interactive and send it on, on display. I'd be in favor of that as well. Agreed, this is symbolic, but it's a powerful symbol. And one that I think we could all really embrace and hopefully, you know, make, make our communities proud. So, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Chenier, thanks for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Um, I wanna make a comment, but return it over to Councilmember Chenier. You know, this morning, a number of us were with Councilmember Vang. Decrying the rise in, uh, anti-Asian, uh, hate crimes, including a. Uh, an incident, terrible incident in South Sacramento. And we all sort of said the same thing in different ways, that words matter. Words really matter. What people say matters. And we said that in a negative way. I know I said it in a negative way, referring to our former president and the tone that. I think he set in this country. But tonight, I think, represents the opposite, that words can matter in a very positive and powerful way. And this sign is going to make people reflect. And to think and to talk and to act, um, to remedy, to try to remedy great injustices. And I like sort of where Councilmember Rashby was going a moment ago. I don't think this is just the baseline, that we can turn this into some form. And we should provide some resources and funding to some form of an educational experience. Um, around black history in our community. The history of redlining, the issues with our police. Um, I, I think we could take other steps here. That would use this and elevate it for even greater opportunity for education and dialogue. This is a great start and, um, I think it'll be very, very powerful. And I thank Councilmember Chenier for your leadership. I thank Gracie Phillips and Tanya Faison. And Zach Trobridge and everybody. Um, makes me proud to be, uh, a Sacramento today. Thank you. Councilman Chenier?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, a, a couple of things I wanna reiterate, Zach. You know, this sign just showed up in Critters Park one day. Um, and, uh, my wife and I were kinda walking around the park. It's like, oh, what are these people looking at over there? So, uh, it's very cool and, uh, it was a very sad day when it got vandalized. Um, cuz that's not who we are as a city, I think. Um, but I wanna thank you for your work in it and your work in rebuilding it, uh, and, and putting it in McClatchy Park. Um, Tanya and Gracie, thank you so much for coming today. Appreciate it. Um, I, I appreciate all the thank yous from my colleagues, but it's, it's totally not about me. This is from the community and about the community. Um, I think my, my colleagues have said a lot of the things that I would say. You know, I, I've worked, uh, in, in this. You know, I I've worked uh in in this position now for 10 years. Over that period of time, we've probably invested over a million and a half dollars in McClatchy Park in rebuilding the amusement park and and putting in the skate park. Um, the tennis courts, rebuilding the basketball court, rebuilding the ball fields. All things that the community absolutely deserves. Um, you know, should be a first-class quality experience when you when you go visit McClatchy Park because of the history that it has here. Um, for those who don't know, it it actually was an amusement park at one point called Oak Park. Um, it did have a roller coaster there, among other things. And and the trolley car came down Fifth Avenue from downtown to get people there and and one of the first suburbs really that we had here in Sacramento. Um, I I really hope that, well, what I was gonna say, we we've invested a lot of money into the park. Um, but I think that this sign is as important as any singular thing that we've done. And I hope that it remains as a touch point for us when we think about what we're doing in the communities, what our young people need. Um, couldn't couldn't say it better than Ashley said and talking about the program they're doing at Oak Ridge and what they're doing for families and young people. Um, we just need to work harder together to do that. So uh, with that, I I look forward to it. I I don't know. We can say a year at this point. I know the structure may or may not handle the winter. We we can talk about that. We can talk about what it would be um to to move it around the city or do something with it. I'm happy to talk about that with you, Zach. We appreciate your work on it. Um, and we appreciate it again. Um, all the work the city staff has done, Mario. Um, and our our legal people, Cheryl, for making sure that we can do this and do it in the right way so it can be sustained. So with that, I will uh move the staff recommendation uh to to install this. Um, with extending the timeline by six months to one year uh before we make a decision about what to do. And Zach, we can work with my office to make sure that it's stable throughout that period of time. So thank, that's my motion.
Second by Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you.
Um, let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Protem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Loloey.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg.
Yes, unanimous. Congratulations and thank you. It's excellent. All right, members, um, that concludes the formal part of the agenda. Do we have public testimony and items not on the agenda? Madam Clerk.
Yes, I have three callers and I do have some board and commission appointments to read in the record. May I do that?
Yeah, I want to do that first.
Thank you. So board and commission appointments to the Sacramento Youth Commission, Abraham Theodore Francis Tyson Person, Cassandra Medina, to the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission, Greg Jefferson, and to the Active Transportation Commission, Manuel uh Buensistro. Would you like the public comment callers now?
Yes, please.
Thank you. First caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Uh, this is Steve Ulller, District Six. I'm hoping you've had a chance to tour or find out more about smud's uh hedge road facility, PV facility, and the challenges of getting renewable energy in Sacramento County. Um, I see in some of the documentation on electrification, they talk about if you purchase renewable energy, you are at zero emissions. That's only true if you have title to the renewable energy credits. So any of you folks who think that you're getting renewable energy, uh, if you don't have title, you don't have claim. Um, I I and and watching some of the and listening to some of the other conversation. Imagine if you simply got rid of your homeless problem by paying another city to house 10 people when you had 10 people you wanted to have. You have to have renewable energy at the site in order to reduce your carbon footprint. You do nothing by electrification other than doubling the amount of natural gas that will be burned in the county, increasing air pollution related to that. And so uh, you really need to rethink this electrification. You should find power content labels, uh, both for PG&E and smud. Note that PG&E provides a hundred percent carbon-free electricity to all of their customers without paying anything additional. Smud doesn't even provide uh renewable energy for some of their green products. Please consider uh holding off on any requirement to not uh to to electrify until smud at least gets a content label that matches PG&E. This is serious business. It's been a long time. Smud is still way behind. They're supplied by bank. If if you're a business from the outside and you're looking for a place to go to find renewables, you don't come here. You look at bank and you go, they don't have anything. They only have any, even have uh 2% of solar in 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 the balancing area. And if you don't know about this, your staff should better better look into the EIA and see where our energy actually comes.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Please consider that we do not have renewables before and make sure we do before you electrify.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Uh, I would like to uh have the City Council look at an Assembly Bill. Assembly Bill Seventy-one by uh Assemblywoman Liz Rivas, Bring California Home Act. This will help with the homeless population. It's been endorsed by City of LA Mayor Eric Garcetti, City of San Francisco Mayor London Breed, City of Oakland Mayor Libby Schaaf, and one of the other uh endorsers, but not all of them, uh, the Stenberg Institute. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, yes, this is uh Lambert Davis Jr. Up to the van back cheesecakes. Um, I wanted to uh comment, I hope that all of the city council persons listen and the mayor as well as the city manager. Uh, someone in my family got me a uh, an actual map of District Two. I think everyone should look that up and see how um segregated District Two is. I mean, I listened to Mr. Loloey mention about substance abuse and men- mental facilities. Uh, this weekend, I took a ride into Woodlake. And they have uh actually an industry built there regarding substance abuse and mental facilities. I was shocked to see that. But it is right there off of Leisure Lane. So I suggest you get familiar with that because there are establishments in that area right there in District Two. Um, as far as uh Mr. Chenier, it took a lot of courage for you to do what you did regarding Black Lives Matter. And I want to commend you for that. I hope that you will vote with two-thirds majority to fund our cheesecakes because now we have built so much, uh, uh, my, the young people call it viral. I'm a baby boomer, so I'm learning on the fly about what viral means. But what I wanted to say is that we are now starting to be approached by all kinds of different groups in this city. And they're starting to be concerned about why a company like ours out of Del Paso Heights who are played by all the rules. We even have a manufacturer in California and founded in California, based in Del Paso Heights, has not received one penny of funding. So I hope that that vote gets together, votes us in, because the Davis family's been here since nineteen forty-six.
Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, fund to the van back cheesecakes.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Thank you very much, uh, members of the public. Are there council ideas and questions? Let's see. See Councilmember Vang?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to to take this opportunity, uh, one, just to um present a a resolution uh that my team and I have been working on. Um, earlier uh today, uh, the community held a press conference to stand up against anti-Asian incidents. And I want to take this moment uh to thank Mayor Steinberg, Councilmember Geta. Uh, the press conference actually happened in his district. Um, Councilmember Jennings, Pastor Les, and all the community organizers and activists and leaders on the ground uh for standing in solidarity with the Asian-American Pacific Islander community. Um, I also want to thank Kelly Shum, the owner of the locally um owned Chinese family businesses and her family for inviting uh me and um my colleagues and all of us, all of us, uh, to join her uh this morning to stand in solidarity. Um, as as you all know, colleagues, um, there has been an alarming increase in anti-Asian hate and incident in our nation, our state, and here uh at home in Sacramento. Um, and hate against Asian-American Pacific Islander community has risen, uh, you know, during the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, and for me, I think it's really important as a a collective uh governing body uh that we condemn what is happening in and uh to uh the Asian-American Pacific Islander community. I think uh the multiple and inter- intergenerational harm and trauma um our community hold is uh painfully deep. And it's really important for us to be able to acknowledge those lived experiences. Um, you know, and as we continue to engage uh with our diverse community, um, I think it's really important for us uh to also understand the inter um connectivity between uh anti-Asian racism, xenophobia, and really the mo- uh the movement for Black Lives. Um, and so I think it's, you know, very fitting as well as we, earlier, we talked about the need in order to um really uplift, affirm uh why Black Lives Matter. And I really believe that, you know, our liberation is truly bound to each other. Um, I see the resolution that I'm going to be presenting, really not separate, uh, but a part of our larger work with the City Racial Equity Initiative. Um, and I know uh my colleagues, I've heard from all of you, you know, that this city um, that the city of Sacramento is truly committed to advancing equity and racial justice for for people um and for Sacramento. And so I hope that this council will uh join me next week in support of this resolution uh when I bring it back to the full council. And I just, um, again, just wanted to thank all of you, all my colleagues who have reached out to me um and to community members that have uh really experienced um um everything from microaggressions uh in the Asian-American Pacific Islander community to to actual, to to assaults and attacks. And so just want to say thank you to all of you for standing in solidarity and hope that I can count on your support uh next week.
Thank, thank you for your leadership, Councilmember Vang. We look forward to that debate um next week as well. I know what the outcome will be. Confident. Um, but to to Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a brief moment to say my support of what Councilwoman Vang has been doing and um how I look forward to being able to vote on this matter um and and strong standing with our API community who deserves to feel safe. And hate, I mean, we've said it before and will keep saying it, hate has no place in Sacramento. Um, and I think these statements that we've made tonight um in support of Black Lives Matter and the statement will be prepared to make next week, send a strong signal and I'm looking forward to working with you. Because it's similar to tonight, the statement is just the beginning. And what more can we do to ensure that the community is supported and has the tools they need to and that we're doing our part to fight um anti-Asian sentiments in our communities and districts? So thank you, Councilwoman Vang, for leading on that really important work.
Thank you. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and thank you again, uh, Councilmember Vang. Uh, you reached out to me uh shortly after the incident that happened in my council district and I greatly appreciate that. Um, you know, the the, I I completely support your resolution. And, you know, the conversation that we had today, you know, unfortunately, it hasn't been the first time as well. You know, we saw that early on in the pandemic, you know, when uh our past president began to make those comments. And even before we had a shutdown, there was uh, there there was these, this uh, this type of negative impact to the the community there and the businesses there who have uh supported the community, that that area, the boulevard, and when times were tough. Uh, and thank you very much to the, to Kelly Shum and her family who, um, since the eighties have uh uplifted that community in that area, in in our uh and um in our southeast corridor. Uh, but this this resolution, thank you, Councilmember Vang, is because it's happening not just in one area. It's happening throughout the entire city as we've seen it. And so I think that's an important point, uh, that you've taken some leadership to make sure that that's identified throughout the city. So appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I do have one announcement. I want to thank NorCal Resist. Uh, for, our office will be partnering with them um this Friday, November, March fifth. Um, at the Georgetown's Community Center, we're going to be doing uh uh food, free food distribution boxes for low-income families. Uh, we have about 600 boxes that we're going to try to be able to, each box will be able to help out an individual individual family. We'll start about 11:00 AM till 1:00 PM. Uh, again, we want to thank this joint partnership for this drive-through event to, we still have issues of food insecurity in our community. And uh, do want to thank NorCal Resist and also our parks and uh, uh, community center uh folks. Ms. V, thank you for always uh being able to be a supporter for these efforts.
Thank you. Uh, next, um, Mayor Protem Ashby, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things for me. First, uh, I want to plug our vaccination clinic, which Mayor, I think you're coming to visit this week, aren't you?
Yes, I believe so.
I think you are too. On Thursday morning, this is Councilmember Member Harris and I working with the county. And we are thrilled that every Thursday we put out over a thousand vaccinations into the district. And I am really proud of Councilmember Harris's staff and my staff, particularly my chief of staff, Karina Talamontes. Thanks to them, we continue to do better with our diversity outreach numbers than the average of the county and the state. So really proud of this site, this vaccination site, and our numbers are so high. So Councilmember Harris, on behalf of he and myself, we're just really proud of our staff and our community. It is a fantastic site. And then lastly, I I want to say something to Councilmember Vang. You know, there may be people who are out there listening to this and thinking, you know, that it's great that we're standing up for it, but I, what I see in you is so much bigger than that. It's very difficult to have an issue so personal happen in our city. And you are showing extraordinary bravery and leadership. And I'm just very proud of you. I am proud that you're occupying that seat. I am proud that you're leading in our city. And I think you are doing an amazing job and I just don't want anyone to discount how hurtful and difficult the subject matter is to you personally and therefore all of us standing with you. So I I uh I do not believe there will be any debate next week. But I look forward to not only supporting your resolution, but more importantly, supporting you and supporting the broader API community in the Sacramento region. I know Dr. Pan, Senator Pan, has also been standing with you and doing some great work, written some important uh articles as of late on these types of topics too. And I'm just grateful that we have leaders in our community that are standing up not only locally, regionally, and potentially nationally to say that this is just unacceptable, will not be tolerated, not in our city ever. And it is deeply, deeply disturbing. So I'm proud of you, Councilmember Vang.
Thank you. Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, two, two things for the city manager, kind of that have been catalyzed by the conversation we were having over the BLM piece. One is, I'm hoping, um, and I'm happy to work on funding with you, Howard, on this. But uh directing city staff, and that would be Megan Vingordas, if I pronounced her last name right, to work with the community to identify opportunity for a community arts project. So we know the BLM sign is not permanent, but we do, as Tanya was talking about, want to put something up uh that that is permanent. So if we could work together on that, that would be great. Also, um, all of this kind of raises a question about memorials and monuments. And I'm not sure that the city has a policy on that. So I'm hoping that we can take a look at that, that your appropriate staff can look at it, we can get into law and ledge on that. But I think that more than just, you know, benches in the park, which are great, and a lot of folks do, how is it that we want to honor um both movements and Sacramento's um as we go forward? So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I I I don't know how many people on the council are aware, but last Friday, there was a demonstration at Saint Francis High School. And uh, it was precipitated by an event that happened at the school and an expression by a young student that was very inappropriate. Um, uh, and expression, I, what I, what I think was kind of hatred really against Black that was very inappropriate, um, uh, and expression, I, what, what I think was kind of hatred, really, against black people. So as a result of that, a demonstration formed. And I was asked by the Black Parents Group to come speak at a rally at the school last Friday. So what happened is a bunch of demonstrators gathered at East Portal Park and marched up End Street to the Saint Francis campus, all carrying signs. And, um, I have to tell you, it was not what I expected. It turns out that all of the demonstrators were the young women who attend Saint Francis. A hundred and twenty-five about young women came with placards and the overriding message that they held up said, "Do better, be better." And I have to tell you, this was very moving for me because these are young women who are invested in their own education and expressing displeasure with what could be a cultural problem at their school. And they were very vocal, but instead of just coming from a place of anger, they were coming from a place of, "Let's fix this." I thought it was an extremely positive event. I would say that several members of our own city staff spoke at this rally, uh, black women who attended Saint Francis in the past and currently. And they were very eloquent, but the fact of the matter is, they were demonstrating for justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. And I believe they can achieve it at this school. So, um, I was very, very honored to speak there in the presence of people who had lived through poor treatment, bad treatment, you know, injustice, really. Uh, I believe in the institution and like most institutions, I think that if they don't grow, they become irrelevant. But I believe that Saint Francis will grow through this. And, um, I'm very, I just wanna say that I'm very proud of the young women who found the fortitude and the moxie to get out there and say, "We want our school to be a better place for all people." So it really falls into the discussion that we've had here for the last hour. And, uh, yeah, I have to say, it just gave me a lot of hope that we are in, at an inflection point in our country where I think the will is very strong to change for the better, to be more inclusive, to embrace diversity like we are in the city. And I also wanna take this moment to thank Ami Barnes because she was the woman that I went to to seek advice about things to say and how to approach the event. And I gotta tell you, she is really tremendous person to have on our staff and I'm, I'm very glad she's here. That's all, Mayor.
Well, Councilman Harris, I think that is a great note with which to end tonight's meeting. Um, and thank you. If there's nothing else to come before the city council, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone.